And I have a couple of adjustments to the agenda is, are there any, is anyone else have an adjustment to the agenda at all?
No, I'm good.
Okay, so my adjustments are last, at our last meeting, we had appointing someone to the solid, Central Vermont Solid Waste Management District. Eileen Wildman and I forgot to put it on, we did, we postponed that because I wasn't quite, hadn't gotten a confirmation from Eileen. And then I forgot to put it on this agenda. So it's not a major thing. I think we'll just, we'll add it as an adjustment. And then I want to just talk a little bit about, oh, it's called ARPA and somewhere I wrote down what that stands for. But I can't find it. It's the American.
Recovery, something.
Yeah, Plan Act. Thank you, Paul. American Recovery Plan Act. And the town is in line for a pretty good chunk of money for that. So I wanted to just talk a little bit, a little bit about that, just kind of introduce what this thing is about. And us, Bonnie Wanniger, the Executive Director from the Central Vermont Regional Planning Commission has offered to come and meet with us at a select board meeting to talk more about it. So we'll probably set that up for a future meeting. Any public comment at all? Okay, here any? So do I hear a motion to approve the bills to the town?
Oh.
Guess I'll second it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. And then do I hear a motion to approve the minutes to the April 26, 2021 Select Board Meeting?
So move.
I'll second that. All those in favor? Yeah.
Aye.
Aye, okay. So we are ready for the Town Clerk's Report.
I just received an email in this afternoon. It is from Secretary of State's office and they need to have an updated list of the Select Board members. And the one that they had, it had Michael as the chair, then Brian and Paul.
Okay.
So I can just remove Brian and put Chris in there. And it doesn't matter who's, who's number two and who's number three for members?
No. No.
Okay. And the dog licenses are slowing down. We're down to 50 or so that are still unregistered. But other than that, I think those are going well.
Yeah, great.
And in my spare time, I have been playing in the vault, getting used to the card files and then going to the deeds and the mortgage and all of that stuff. So get a little more familiar with everything.
Right. Yeah, there's a lot of stuff in there. Goes way back too.
There is. And seeing that it's slow, I am going to start putting the dog licenses into the NIMREC system.
Okay. So Brandy is helping you understand that a little bit better?
Yes, and there's also Penny, Penny at NIMREC that's been very helpful to me. And that's about what I've got.
Okay, all right. I see Brandy, oh yes, Diana. Your mic, your, oops, I guess you got, I think Chris is going to join us here. Your mic is muted, Diana.
Okay, Robin ran the election for the special town meeting. We had a whopping turnout of 1% of which more than half approved. So that, that went quite smoothly. That's all I have.
Okay. Let's see, Brandy, are you ready to give us a town treasurer's report? Or would you like us to come back to you? Diana, Robin, could you just ask Brandy?
She said to come back, please.
Come back, okay. I didn't hear that. Okay, we'll do that. Let's see, actually, why don't we go on to, let's see, well, what to do here? Why don't we meet with Teagan? And so I just want to briefly introduce Teagan Martel. She contacted me and was interested in filling a position in the town, either as the Select Board Assistant or the Health Officer. And yes, I kind of warned her away from the Health Officer. That would sour you on any other town position for your rest of your life, I think. So, and, and we both thought that it would be a good way for her to get to know a little bit about the town and some of the people in the town and some of the town's business by being the Select Board Assistant. You'll get both the good and the bad in that role, as far as what you see happening in town.
Yes, you will.
Not to be a pessimist, but sometimes it isn't pleasant and sometimes it is. So so Teagan, I don't know if you have anything that you'd like to say, or if anybody has any questions for Teagan?
I guess just tell us a little bit about yourself.
Okay.
Yeah, hi everyone. It's nice to meet you. Um, yeah, I had a great conversation kind of about those two positions and about how my, I am a social worker and have a very eventful job and it sounded like.
So you're familiar with this stuff then, okay.
Yeah.
But in order to kind of get used to the town and everything, that the Select Board Assistant was probably the best fit. And I'm really, I think it's super important to help out with our local communities and everything, which is why I'm interested. Yeah, any, I'm happy to answer any questions. If there's anything in particular.
What I mentioned to Teagan for, maybe for starters is just to, after this meeting, maybe taking over, doing the notes to the meeting and then the the draft for the meeting minutes, that would be a good place to start. And then I know our former Select Board Assistant would help out with our different projects that we were working on. They might do research or, or just, you know, kind of come up with the information that the Select Board would need. So that's another possibility. Teagan, I'm wondering how many, I think the former Select Board Assistant would spend about four hours a week. That's what we kind of allotted to them and they were paid an hourly wage for that. So I'm wondering, you know, with your, it sounds like you're already working full time. How many hours do you think you would be able to devote to the position?
My evenings right now are pretty, pretty free and I'm happy to do that kind of like after work. So I think that is very reasonable.
Four is a good, good, okay, all right. And then I guess, I guess it would be up to the Select Board to figure out how much we should pay you on an hourly rate. Do you have any idea at all what, what you would like to get in that position?
I don't, kind of talking about pay is not one of my strong suits.
Well, it's not one of mine.
What have we been doing historically when Laura, Laura was there?
I think Laura was making about $15 an hour.
Okay, that, maybe. Is that reasonable?
Yeah, I think that's reasonable.
Okay. Maybe we'll check in, Brandy could probably find the exact amount for us at some point. I don't have to do it right now, Brandy, but we'll kind of figure out where we started Laura at, or where she ended up. I'm not sure which, but.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, yes. Yeah.
Laura was at 1455.
Okay, so I think 15 is a.
I think 15 an hour is a reasonable, is that something agreeable to you? So do we need a motion for the hiring? Or is it an appointment? So I'll make a motion that we appoint, it's Teagan, right? As our, as our assistant at the rate of $15 an hour and it'll just go up with the town employees annually whenever that happens.
Okay, all right.
Just will second the motion.
Second that. Any more discussion about the motion from anyone? Okay, I'm hearing, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Sounds like you're, you're hired.
Yeah, I mean, if Teagan's interested in being health officer, that's a conversation we can have, you know, because it sounds like you have some experience with kind of the challenges that you'd have. I have a lot as having 33 years as a code enforcement officer. So I kind of know the field you're in.
Yes, Diana.
I was just going to recommend that on the town website, there's lots of to learn how, how it goes.
Right. And I, and I thought I would send Teagan like some of the notes versus the final minutes, just to kind of get a sense of how things get pared down some in that process. We try to keep the, the minutes to about three pages and it and kind of walk a fine line between giving just the absolute essential information, which is what's required in the minutes.
Required.
And then, and then trying to make it somewhat informative for town residents to have an understanding of what the issue was or what the discussion was.
You know, some people came, they said some things and then they left, that guy.
Yeah, so.
And then just to, to double check, would this town meetings minutes be, am I starting now?
I know Diana will do it tonight. So, but, so for the next meeting.
Okay, sounds good.
And someday we'll be in person again.
Yes, yeah, maybe fairly soon, we'll see.
In the meantime, so I'm going to need to get a W2, a W4 from her filled out. So if somebody can send me or if, yeah, just give me her email and I can scan it, send it to her and have, and she can mail it back to me.
Okay, okay.
That way I can get it into the system.
All right. I'll, I'll do that.
There'll have to be a process for her getting into the building if she wants to take the minutes from here, or if she wants to take the minutes from home. That's something we can help you figure out.
And also, I think I mentioned this when we were speaking, Teagan, but the, the meeting is filmed or recorded by HCTV. So on their website, usually within three or four, five days, the meeting gets posted on the website. So that if you're, if there's ever a question in the notes that you took about a certain, whatever, if there's ever a question, you can, you can check it out by watching the recording. Good, okay. Anything else at all for any other questions, Teagan, or any other questions for Teagan?
I don't have any questions, but thank you.
Well, thank you.
Yeah.
Maybe we should set up a time to meet.
And welcome. Glad to have, have your interest in the town.
And that sounds like a, a great idea, Diana.
Well, Brandy's going to get your email so she can set something up.
Right. Okay, so let's move on. We'll jump back to the town treasurer's report.
And I'll mute myself here.
Yeah, I think, and the other mics are muted, so we shouldn't.
All right, let me grab. So for AP warrant for bills over the last two weeks totaling $14,351.75. Our payroll warrant totaling So over the last two weeks for income, we took in for delinquencies, $5,697.59. Bringing us to a total of $95,724.76 for delinquencies. Income also out of cash receipts, we took in fleet permit. We have, there was a library donation. There was restor, records restoration income, also another conservation donation. Copies, dog licenses, land records recording, land copies and prepaid taxes totaling $2,005 even. That left us in the negative. So I did a $10,000 transfer from the money market over into the checking today. Other goodies. So we got to finish up the green up as soon as we get the Central Vermont Solid Waste in. We just received the tire invoice today. Since we finished getting the, the, the solid waste, I'll finish up the green up grant.
Okay.
What else?
How much did the tires come to, Brandy?
I can't hear him.
How much did the tires come to? We had quite a, quite a truckload, remember, right?
If I didn't want to find out, I could be right here.
It, it doesn't matter. I was just curious. Don't, don't.
69 tires. He charged us $5 apiece, $345.
Okay. Well, that's 69 less tires on the side of the road in town.
And there was $101 brought in that was paid for paid tires.
Okay.
Can you turn it back up, Robin? I'm sorry. This whole echoing system is a.
It's kind of interesting to listen to.
No, it's a cluster inside here.
Reminds me of some of the recordings I have.
I don't want it. It's like we're meeting back here. So any questions for me?
Yeah, I had a question. I'm just wondering, what's the difference? I was looking at the do to, do from.
Yeah.
And I'm wondering, what's the difference between the highway do from to, from to, and the highway equipment reserve? Or maybe just what is the highway do from do to fund?
So since we have one checking account, we have 16 accounts, but they're all in one checking. So the $120,295.94 is what the highway has left for money to the end of the fiscal year.
Okay.
Minus, minus class four, class two and three roads that we get from the state and if the Swenson money is going to be going into the highway, the next one or whether it's going to gravel.
Okay.
And, and the, the highway equipment reserve is our, her fund.
I know with that, yeah, that's why I think my real question was what the highway fund was. So when we, when we get money from Swenson, a reimbursement, that goes right into the highway fund and then some of it goes into the highway reserve fund?
Yeah, the total amount goes into the highway. And then within the highway, we have expense accounts for the herd and for saving and it gets transferred over from there.
Okay, good.
You see the total amount from the Swensons in the highway and then it gets dispersed.
Okay, great. Yeah. That was the only question I had. Any other questions about the financials from anybody? Do you want to move on to the, the fuel bid and the mowing contract? That we do that, kind of tag it right in because you're, you're the overseer of those.
So as far as the mowing, we put out a bid, we put out an RFP for a three-year contract. The contractor that was chosen bid on a three-year contract. So he would like you, the Select Board, to reconsider the three-year term.
Okay. Any thoughts from the Select Board? I, I have some thoughts, but I'd like to hear from either Paul or Chris first.
Well, let other people speak, but based on what we've spoken about, why aren't we considering a three-year contract again?
And I'm kind of back, well, the last meeting, we had discussed potentially having the town buy their own mower. The problem is we put an RFP out for a three-year contract. So I mean, I think we're up against accepting the RFP as we sent it or declining all the bids and rescinding.
I think we have to honor our RFP, don't we?
Right, well, we could, we could terminate it if we chose to. I don't think that's a good idea.
I think it's a really bad idea. I agree. I think it would be problematic to.
Yeah. So it's just not fair to the bidders because they've kind of shown their cards. And then if you say, no, no, it's a one year. You know, but there it is. So I, I'd be inclined to stick with what we sent out if that's what everyone wants to do.
I don't see a reason not to.
And that, that's what I would prefer too. You know, I don't know how, I like the idea of the town owning a mower and hiring someone. I don't know how realistic that is. And I don't know, you know, it could, obviously there could be pros and cons with that, but I do think, you know, that we should probably honor the three-year RFP also. So it sounds like we're in agreement on that.
I'll go ahead and make the motion to accept the three-year contract as proposed from Brandy.
Okay.
Chris will second that.
All right. Any, any more discussion? I have, I have one, one more question for Brandy about that. When you and Patty met with the, is it doctor, is it DNR? What is, what is it the contractor exactly called his business?
DR Property.
DR Property.
So it's Derek Richardson.
Okay. So it's just DR Property, not property management or anything like that?
I don't have it in front of me. I must, yeah, there's more to it.
Okay. I was trying to put it in the, in our minutes from the last meeting and I.
The mowing person.
I knew it wasn't D and R, but.
I have a question and this is actually for Chuck. Chuck, if, if you're willing to think about this, do you think that if we had our own equipment, this is something that, that your crew might be able to help us support or are we talking about another hire? Like a part-time hire?
I'm afraid you'd be a part-time liar.
Yeah, that's, that's what I would anticipate.
I'm pretty sure we'd have to hire somebody. It'd be a lot to ask the road crew to pick up mowing now.
So I, I agree. I don't think that that's fair. So I think that we're talking about a part-time hire. So buying our own equipment is a great idea, but if we can't support it, what's the point?
Well, we could, we're going to just have to plan for it. If you wanted to do that, I'm not sure we want to do that, but.
It sounds like we can think about it over three years.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, we can discuss it more. It's an, it's an interesting idea. It would be worth more discussion.
You're going to have to think about transportation for that.
Right, you got to move the mower. There's a lot of things that go with it. You got to have a trailer. You're going to have to have a truck to throw it with. You have to pay somebody. It's a lot of things come up.
It's nice to have a mower, but if we can't move it around.
Right. You're going to have to have a weed whacker and then there'll be how you may fixing it and.
Right.
Long ride on Royal Moore all the way to West Woodbury.
Yeah.
Honestly, went on the Ho Chi Minh Trail.
So it sounds like a three-year contract is really the smart.
I think so. I mean, we just aren't set up for it. And I think trying to pull it out of our hat, you know, just not going to be a fast thing. There's a lot to think about. Again, we could visit the issue and think it through and you get the total cost, but I'm not sure we would recreate it for what it's going to be done for by someone who does it all the time.
Right. It depends on the time scale and, and what we, we can really work with, but it's a conversation that's worth having. But I think that we have to honor our three-year contracts and I think it gives us that flexibility.
Okay.
I think that we should should support it.
So Brandy, I have one more question. So did you and Patty talk with Derek about the workman's comp and employees?
I did. I made it very clear that the contract will be voided if there is somebody else on our property locations with him using the equipment.
Okay, all right, good. So we have a motion on the floor. Is there any more discussion at all? So all those in favor of awarding a three-year contract to DR Property? I, does it say, say aye?
Maintenance and lawn care.
Okay. I'll say aye, aye, okay. So that's unanimous. No one's opposed. So good. So that's done. So we've awarded that.
The Select Board will need to come in and sign the contract.
Okay.
Also have Derek come in and sign the contract.
Okay.
It'll be on the table. There's tabs for the Select Board and Derek Richardson.
Okay, great. And probably the, as soon as we can get in there, the better.
Yes, please. The contract states for May 15th, starting time.
All right.
Thank you, Brandy.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
So next, kind of tagged with the town treasurer report is the fiscal year 22 fuel bid. To send out an RFP, I just, I have one comment, Brandy, about the fuel bid. We should remove the diesel, the off-road diesel.
Yeah.
From that RFP, because we've basically committed ourselves to Gillespie for the diesel fuel, you know, when they provided us with the above ground storage tank. So, so we should just probably remove that from, from the RFP.
So I have five vendors that are fuel vendors that I will email, mail the RFP to.
Okay.
There is a deadline for the contract. Or there's a deadline for the proposal, which is June 24th. The Select Board will open them on June 28th. I will also be putting it on Front Porch Forum and our website. And that way we save on advertising. We hit the free ones and then I will send to these five vendors. Yeah.
Okay.
As long as that's okay with the Select Board.
Yeah, that sounds fine. To me, anyway.
Yeah, that's fine.
I agree, I agree with that. That's the right approach.
Okay. Did, did, did you want to try to have this resolved by the beginning of the fiscal year and on July 1st? Yes?
Yes.
I was kind of reading your, your.
June 28th, Select Board meeting, you will choose a vendor and it will be, it will be up and running for 7-1.
Okay.
Yep.
Sounds good. Any other comments or questions about the RFP for the fuel? And, you know, usually I think historically the company that we've gone with is Gillespie's. But, you know, we're, we're bound by the purchasing policy to put it out for bid. And this is just for one year.
We, last year we put out a three-year option.
Yeah.
There was no takers because the, the gas fluctuates so much.
Fuel prices.
So that I think that it's only a, a year option.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, I was gonna say that we, we, it looks like we've done this for, for a three-year in the past, but I don't think that's the status of how we do this anymore. I don't think that any company is gonna.
And no one's gonna bid on it.
No, no, they don't want to commit themselves that far out.
We never know what the price of fuel is gonna be.
It's just too flexible. So, um, I mean, I think that we have to expect a one-year. We're gonna have to turn this around every year.
Yeah.
Yep.
Where we are.
Yeah, yeah. Even one year, it's hard to predict.
Right.
Okay, um, anything else for the town treasurer?
I don't believe so.
Okay. Any questions for Brandy at all? Or any? All right. So.
You're welcome.
So next on the agenda is the town highway report.
Well, we've had a lot of rain, so we're behind on grading. But then the Cabot Road today, uh, Flat Street, the North Road, Wheeler Hill, ditched the backside of Wheeler Hill.
So which side is the backside?
South Woodbury side.
Yeah, the Dog Pond Road side.
Okay.
So that's pretty well cleaned up, ready to be honed. We're going to East Hill tomorrow, I hope.
I got a caller who's hoping that you do that too also.
Yeah. Well, we were gonna go there this morning, but the Cabot Road is in pretty rough shape and.
Yeah.
East Hill is too, I know, but we figured we'd give it an extra day to dry out.
Okay.
So we're gonna be up there in the morning.
All right.
And I've instructed them to do all the roads up there. So when we're done on the hill, we this side of the hill, this side of fourteen should be pretty well done for
Okay.
A while. And then we're going to the county road.
County road would be good. Yeah.
Yeah, that's in rough shape.
It's in rough shape. Yep.
Yeah. We got to New Mor that's about ready to be put into use. Paul got us some nozzles, so we're, I thought they were gonna wash some aprons today, but I didn't see anybody this afternoon, so I don't know what.
Did they get stuff connected up? Are those gonna work? All right, Chuck?
Yeah, yeah, we bought an adapter.
Yeah, I thought there might be an issue because you have, if you have a NH hose thread, we have iron pipe for that size. That probably was the issue.
Yeah, but we bought an adapter. They should, well, maybe that was the problem. Maybe the adapter wasn't right. I don't know.
Yeah, Tim, I, there's one at the fire station. Tim can grab if you need it. We, I grabbed out too. So if you have to have it, it'll, it'll, it'll convert from, from NH if that's your hose to iron pipe, which is the threads on the, on the nozzle.
I I was under the assumption that our pipe thread on the, on the hose was inch and a half pipe.
It could, if it is, then the nozzles should thread right on.
Right. And like I say, they were, they were working at it this morning when I was up there and then I got busy and worked for myself all day and I didn't get back over there, but I'll find them.
Are they gonna use the hydro seeder, Chuck, to, to do the spraying with?
No, they're gonna use a chloride tank.
A chloride tank. Okay, right.
In the back of the dump truck.
Yep.
Okay. Should work real good. We got it. Everything's all set up, so it should work out real good. And Greg and I were talking and he's been concerned, he was concerned about it last fall and he brought it up to me again this year about the snow machine trail. Coming out at the top of, at the end of the blacktop at the Cabot Road. And going up the road, right across McCory Road. He says that's part of the problem why they can't keep that road so the trucks can get up and down it without them doing a lot of complaining. Because when they bring the groomer and stuff out around there, it drops all the snow and then the snow machines come out. When they get after it, they spin and it blows the sand off and.
Okay.
And he's wondering if there's some way we could talk to the, um, Snow Machine Club and see if we can do something different there.
Yeah, we, we could talk. I think it's Stephen Gray, um, from the Mountain Tamers. You know, when I talked to him, um, this fall, he mentioned that's one stretch of road that they would really like to try to figure out what to do there. So, um, we could get in touch with, with him, um, and, uh, just let him know that it's, it is creating a problem for the road crew, maintaining the road, especially for the quarry trucks. And, uh, maybe that will kind of inspire the, the club to figure that out.
It might be a good thing for you to reach out to him with Greg Chuck and go over there. Your concerns are, and then maybe they could, that could at least give them a clear picture of what, what Greg's concerns are. Because if I try to convey it, I might not get it right.
Right.
Yeah, and I don't mind doing that. I just wanted to bring it up so you guys were aware of what was gonna happen before it actually happened.
Yeah, because if it's a problem, we should address it. Uh, it, you don't want to keep it going.
And it's early enough in the year, so maybe we could get something done about it this year.
Yep.
I'll send you, um, Steve, Steve Gray's, uh, contact information.
Okay.
I just, I have a phone number. That's, that's all, but, um.
Yeah.
I, I have, I've never had any trouble getting a hold of him.
No, I've known Steve for years. We, yeah, they're all done.
Okay.
Michael, can, uh, I be included in that, Chuck, if you don't mind?
Sure.
That runs right up behind, uh, a number of places that are sensitive, sensitive wilderness areas for connectivity and it's a good conversation.
Okay.
The place to start.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you're willing, if you're willing.
Yep.
Okay.
I'll get ahold of Steve and see if we can set up a time and I'll let you know, Chris.
Thanks, Chuck. Appreciate it.
Yeah, no problem. Other than that, I guess one of the first projects we're gonna do is finish up around the high drive up there. Take that culvert back out and get the road dropped down. We've been, I've been talking to Paul counsel about that parking lot up there.
Yeah.
Exactly sure when that's gonna come together, but hopefully it'll dry out a little more. There's a lot of water in there right now.
Yeah, it's a, it's a wet spot any time of year, so.
Yeah, yeah. Well, we're definitely gonna have to put a couple of culverts in. No two ways about that, but.
Yeah.
And I guess that's pretty much it.
Okay.
Yeah, I can't think of anything else that.
Okay, I, I guess.
We're meeting with Alan tomorrow, right?
Yes, at one, one PM.
Yeah.
Okay. And I'll, I'll bring the, um, the larger paper, design that, uh, Nate did for us. Um, try to maybe have it mounted on a piece of foam core or something so that we can refer to that, um, as a group. Yeah.
Okay. I was gonna join up with you guys at one tomorrow. Where?
Okay, good.
Where are we meeting?
We'll meet right in the village, um, pretty much right. Um, we could meet in, uh, around the school parking area or by in front of the annex building. Actually, the annex building for the fire department would probably be the best spot.
Okay.
Because we might still be meeting when the school gets out, so.
And Chuck, if you're gonna be there.
I am.
All right, um, Chris Davidson is gonna give me a quote tonight. He's from J McDonald.
Yes, yeah.
Right, so Chris is gonna get me a quote tonight for the crushing costs.
Cool.
And actually, this is for everybody, but, um, so he'll give us a quote for the crushing costs and a location where they can actually leave that material. They're not exactly sure where they're gonna put the crusher. That's gonna have an effect on the cost because they might have to move material that is gonna be stored. Um, it's a lot less expensive than us moving it off-site.
Right.
But, uh, he hasn't been able to give me a quote yet. So, but I think I'll have a quote tonight and then maybe we can chat about it. But I think it's gonna be a very equitable cost since we're getting material for free.
Right, right. Would the quarry be able to, is there a spot at the quarry where they could? I don't, I don't have no idea how big this thing is. It must be a pretty, pretty much a monster of a machine, I would.
It's, it's the size of, uh, of, of a trailer on a semi, essentially.
Okay.
Yeah.
You are more than welcome to have them put it at my house. And I will run through all the grout piles we have.
Thanks, Miss Brandy.
Yeah, I think, I think it should be a good situation up there.
Yeah, I think it's made of rock.
I think it's, it's the right, it's, it's gonna be the right price no matter what, so.
Right. I think it's the right thing to do too.
I think it's the right thing to do.
Yeah.
But, uh, I don't have a formal quote yet. It's just been hard going round and round with, between Swenson and and, and Jay McDonald, but, um, but I'll have a quote. Maybe we can talk about it. See what you think.
Cool.
Sounds good.
All right.
Right. Anything else with the town highway report? All right. So briefly, uh, I think you all saw the email, um, for the listers requesting an extension of time for the twenty-twenty-one grand list. Um, there was a form that I left at the town office for us to sign. Um, I, I guess what they would like for us, um, and I can't even remember how far out they extended it, but, um, for us to, uh, approve, uh, extending the deadline, um, for them to, um, file the twenty-twenty-one grand list. And, and I think, you know, the main reason this happens pretty much every year and a big part of it is, is that we have a lot of property owners that are camp owners and they aren't around here, um, you know, right at the moment. They will be here soon, I would assume. I know the black flies are waiting for them, but, um, so it's, it's always hard for them to either visit a property or, um, you know, to get to, to deal with, uh, with, especially with the camps. So they're, uh, almost every year they request an extension on, on the deadline. Um, so it's pretty, it's kind of a routine thing that happens. Any, any comments or questions about that from anyone?
I'll, I'll make a motion. We accept the extension. I, I read it over. I don't remember what the time was, but I read it over at the town office.
So here a second?
I'll second the motion.
All right. Any, any more discussion about that extension, um, for the listeners?
I, I, I'm fairly new at this, so I apologize, but this seems to be something that we do almost every year based on what I've read thus far.
Yeah, it's, uh, every.
I was just wondering whether or not this deadline that we have set up has any basis in reality in the first place, or whether or not we should be.
It's the state deadline.
It's a statutory thing.
State mandated, yeah.
So that's why we gotta do it and then we're the only ones that can, uh, extend it.
Yeah, no, it doesn't make any sense.
No.
All right. I'm sorry, I was just.
One of those things.
Understand why we have a deadline that never works.
Right.
So we'll have to talk to the state about that one, I guess.
Okay. I apologize.
I had the same question when I started. It's like, why don't we just fix it permanently? Nope, we can't.
Can't. I think if we didn't have so many camp owners, um, that it wouldn't be as big of an issue, um, but, but we do, um. So, um, and it does create problems for the listers, so. Okay, so we have a motion. Any other discussion at all? So all those in favor of, uh, granting an extension on the deadline for the, uh, twenty-twenty-one grand list to the list, to the listers, um, signify by saying I.
Hi.
I, okay, we're unanimous, so, um, we're done. And I, I assume everybody got to look at it and, and sign it. So we're, we're good that way and somebody at the town office can hand that over to our listers and, or whoever, wherever it needs to go.
Chris didn't sign it yet.
I have to, I have to sign it. I'll be there tonight.
Okay.
Okay, all right. All right, so, um, I thought maybe what we could do is quickly do the updates, um, and then, um, and then maybe tackle this personnel policy for a bit. Um, we'll work on it, you know, for twenty minutes or half an hour and, and make sure that we move into executive session at the scheduled time. Um, so, um, briefly, the library roof repair. As you remember, we put out an RFP and we didn't get any response. Um, so I did some phone calling. I was provided with some names of some roofers and we have two contractors that are interested in the job. And I expect to be getting, um, estimates for the project sometime this, this week. Well, I, one of them I know has gone and looked at this building and the roof and the other contractor was going to be doing that, but I haven't, um, I haven't checked within, in with them to see if they did that. So, uh, it does look like we'll get the roof replaced this summer. The one contractor that I've been communicating quite a bit with is, uh, that's all that they do are roofs and and he says he can complete the project in a day with his crew, so, um, so things are looking a little better and that, and, and we'll, hopefully we'll have some, um, estimates to look at at our next meeting to make a, a decision on that.
Michael, can I just, uh, make a, make a point?
You can, yes.
Is this, is this an appropriate time to?
Yeah.
Okay. I've, I've heard from a couple of townspeople, um, who said, why can't we just all kind of get together and put the roof on? Since that's how the building was was sort of put up in the first place. That we just got a group of people together and who are willing and put a building up. Why can we not just get a bunch of volunteers together and have the select board agree to put the materials into it and put a new roof on? And I think that the, I know, I, things have changed since, you know, the, the time when the building was actually constructed. Uh, but the question came to me from a couple of different people about why can't we just put a roof on as a community and not put it out to bid?
Yeah.
Or bid on it as a bunch of volunteers.
Yeah. There's no reason we couldn't do that if we had a group of volunteers that, you know, had the, I mean, the putting the shingles on is easy. Dealing with the fascia and soffits and trying to solve the, uh, rot issue is, does take a little bit of expertise, um, knowledge at least of why. I mean, we can see why it happened and how to correct it. Um, I, I have no objection to that. My only concern is if we you know, get into a can of worms when we start removing the shingles and, um, find out that the sub-surface is rotting and, you know, it can, it can be, it could be complicated.
But somebody's gotta organize, gotta get it out.
Organizer and the people that, that built the buildings, um, are probably not gonna wanna get up on the roof.
Are the individuals you talked to, are they willing to volunteer to do it?
I think they're willing to, at this point, help us direct it.
Yeah, because what I, just, just fair warning, I've run into before where they are willing to have someone else do it. You always be careful of stepping in that one.
Okay, uh, I was just making the, making the point.
Sure, yeah, I got it. We just, just having worked on some volunteer projects, a lot of times the ones suggesting aren't the ones that wanna do it and what you're gonna find out is you're gonna have a, we may get a group, but finding someone to do the organizing, um, and actually get up and do it, you'll have one or three. Who knows? I don't know. Might get a, I don't know. I don't know. I haven't, haven't thought about it much, but.
There is a not, another volunteer project, um, related to the town and the school, um, that's kind of in the works, um, that we could kind of channel that energy with. I don't wanna talk about it right at the moment. It's still, I, I could mention it briefly in, in an update. In fact, I'm talking about it, so why don't I continue? Um, so, um, last week, um, we met with, um, Justine Guthrie, the principal at the school, Larry Eldred, um, Don Turgeon, uh, Elizabeth Stratton, um, Susan Sawyer. The, the school district, um, has money to provide, um, for materials to build an outside classroom on, on the school grounds. Um, and Justine was hoping that the town would be, if the school board provided the, um, materials, um, that there would be volunteers in town that would, uh, help with the construction of this outdoor, um, school classroom. Uh, Michael Sadler, who was on the planning commission, who is a, um, a landscape architect, um, was also at that meeting, and he's already designed a, a classroom. It would be, it would be set down in the woods off where the garden area is within sight of the wetland. And, uh, that I think Larry would be, probably be the project director. He's, he's gonna be, um, finding out, uh, materials prices. So there is this volunteer project, um, kind of in the works. It would, and it would be, um, it would be a, an outside classroom for the school, but it also would be of use to the town. Maybe connecting it, uh, you know, different town functions could happen there, or, you know, even if there was a wedding and people were having a reception at the town hall, they could actually uh, hold the wedding in the shelter. I mean, there's different possibilities for both town and school use. So, and there would be this memorandum of agreement that if the town puts the energy into building it, that, and the school board puts the money into providing the materials, that, um, it would be a, a building of mutual use to both the school and the town. So there is this kind of volunteer project, um, sort of in the works right at the moment, which we, so if people are chomping at the bit to volunteer to build something, or, um, that's another option. But getting back to the roof, um, yeah, I mean, again, it's, it's having, who's gonna oversee the roof replacement? And, you know, I know, I, I can't think of anyone right at the moment, um, that, um, you know.
Too, if we get it stripped and we don't get it replaced, then the building floods. We got insurance. I mean, it just.
Right.
I, the, the who really matters. I mean, if you could, if they can actually do it.
Right.
I've ran into some huge, I mean, in my field, I've run into some huge volunteer project disasters. I had a building, they stripped the roof, and then they put a tarp on. The tarp blew off and did $50,000 damage to the building. Where, which we aren't, we will, it would be insured, but the town, you know, I don't know, it just.
Right.
I got my.
I mean, I, I always liked the idea of that.
Me too, yeah, but it's just, it's hard to do.
It's hard to do, and, and I think what we would need to do is if there was a key figure that had the knowledge and was willing to oversee the project, um, that would be pretty essential to me. And, and we do have, um, I mean, you could talk to these folks if you want, Chris. You know, we're not gonna get the bids until sometime this week, so we, we won't really be looking at them until the next select board meeting, so if there was a kind of a town resident plan that was a little bit more concrete, um, and, and people actually making a commitment, um, you know, that would help in the discussion, I think, when we, when we go to look at the bids.
Yeah, fair enough. So I will.
I would agree to. We can find somebody.
I'll speak with the folks that have contacted me, um, and, and communicate, you know, with the group. I think that we're just in a weird time. If we were in a regular format, maybe these things would have been more easily discussed.
Right.
Um, but we're not in that context, and we have very low attendance, right? So, um, I'll do my best, and I agree that it should go out for bid. Absolutely.
Yeah, and if we got a concrete proposal, and somebody think that can actually do it, we'll take a consideration of it.
We, yeah, yeah, then we can take advantage of it, but otherwise it needs to go out.
Yes. So, so technically, you know, it has gone out. I mean, we sent the RFP out and we didn't get any response, so now the, the next step, we're sort of giving ourselves the okay to contact people and people who are interested, were, you know, were willing to take their, their bids and then, um, you know, decide from that.
I suppose that the only reason that, that I considered this even more than I would have before is that we have a fairly limited time scale. It has to happen over the summer, yes.
Yeah, probably like July or early August is when you gotta do is around six or seven weeks.
Yeah, we, we have, um, between when school ends and when school begins, so basically the end of June to the end of August.
We have, we have two, basically two months to get it done.
Yeah, and the contractors that I've spoken with understand that. Um, and both of them say they can do it. I mean, this one contractor says that he can do it in a day. And he has.
Seriously, I doubt, I doubt that very seriously.
Well, he, um, he's done a couple houses here in Woodbury, and he did them in a day.
I don't think he understands the damage that is.
Yeah, there's a lot of rod and flywood that'll change, but.
There's extraordinary amount of rock.
Yeah.
On the margins of that.
Yep, anyway, um, yeah, okay, so we'll, I'll, I'll look for the bids from these two contractors I've been talking with and, and, um, Chris, if you could work on those people who.
I'll do my best.
Yeah, okay.
It's worth a conversation with.
Yeah, it is, yeah.
And, um, and it's probably the same people who are willing to work on the structure that you just discussed.
Could be, uh, yeah.
Make sure, Michael, on your structure, they deal with the state and town permitting? We've run into some problems.
Yes.
Mobile classrooms that aren't handicap accessible, and they're not, you get a lot of issues with the school property.
It's a, it's on, it's actually on this, uh, school district property.
Right.
This will be built.
They would need a permit from our office and from the town.
Yeah, and I think Larry was gonna work with Justine, um, to, to do the permitting, yeah.
Yeah, just not to get in trouble, cuz I was the bad guy, has to show up and say, sorry.
And, and please remember that Justine is, is outgoing.
I know she is. She wants to have this project kind of in the works before she's gone, so.
Right, so, you know, sooner rather than later, because he's, she's perfectly wonderful.
Yeah.
To work with, but this is probably the time right now.
It's, it's pretty much in the school board's hands right at the moment, or the school, you know, Justine and Larry to, um, to, um, move it forward. Michael Sadler provided them with a, a good design plan, um, and he's been working with Larry on the, you know, the technicalities of that. So, and I think that, you know, um, Larry would probably get the materials and would be there to, to guide the process, um, and Elizabeth Stratton and the friends of the Woodbury Elementary School, um, you know, she was pretty sure that a, a good number of, of those folks would be willing to pitch in on this. And I know one of them, uh, Libby Higgins is, is a builder, um, so we have some expertise there from her. I don't know if we can Schnooker Paul Council in on this too or not. He, he's, he might be busy with his own work, but, um, so, so it's kind of in their court right now to get this organized and, and get it, um, get it going, and then, um, when it's all, and then we'll, the town will do its best to provide the volunteers, but I know, I know Elizabeth will be, be working on that, um, so, and, and she's pretty, she's pretty good at that, so. So, um. Okay, um, anything else about the, the roof repair? So, um, moving on to the emergency generator, um, we do have a meeting tomorrow, um, both for a, a training, um, and also for a site assessment, and there's a little confusion right at the moment. Um, I got a call that was on my machine when I got home from work from the person who was scheduling the site assessment at 11:00. Um, the person that I was talking with last week felt and has scheduled both the training and the site assessment to happen at 9:00. So, so I'm gonna call some, I'm gonna call Brookfield Services tomorrow at 8:00 and try to figure out who's running the show there. But we can anticipate somebody showing up at 9:00, a fellow named Scott, I don't know his last name, to, to do the training, um, and the person I was talking with last year, or last week, felt that he could also do the site assessment, so, um, um, so that, and then we'll go from there, um, as far as, you know, discussion with the, with the generator. We, we, we should, the site assessment will give us some dollar figures on any kind of changes that we, that we might wanna do there. Yes, Diana?
What date was that?
Tomorrow.
Oh, okay.
11th of May, yeah.
Uh, I can be, I, I will be there.
Okay, and also I know there was a question at our last meeting about the propane tank. Um, it is underground. I didn't think I'd ever seen a tank there. Anyway, I called, um, I called Suburban Protein, uh, Propane, and they do a cathodic test on that tank every 18 months. So they are overseeing and managing the, um, the viability of that tank. Um, so, um, I think, you know, which they should, they're the owners of the tank. It's their responsibility. I didn't really look into if there's any state regular regulations on, you know, there is for an underground tank that has gasoline or diesel fuel.
Yeah, not for us, cuz the propane company owns that tank.
Yeah, yeah, so that's their responsibility, and it does.
There are significant ramifications if.
Of course, of, of course.
Of, if, well, I was actually thinking into the future, the plan that, that we have hypothetically, to sort of redo drainage through that area.
Right.
That tank will not work.
Uh huh. The underground tank?
Yeah, they're probably gonna have to move it, but.
It's gonna have to be moved.
Okay.
And the generator's gonna have to move. All of it's gonna have to move, and that is not part of the plan that we have seen established.
Right, I don't know if the engineer, um, Chris Rivet is aware that there's a tank there. I think he is.
It's not on the plan.
Yeah.
Right, I saw the same thing. It's not on the plan, so that's something, next time we talk, they're probably gonna have to address it as part of that project cost.
Okay, so we should, we should.
That's, that's, I, I think that's a significant thing, so I think we should all sort of be aware of the fact that.
Okay.
Underground storage tanks.
Well, what I, I will notify Chris Rivet of that, um, in an email tomorrow, and, um, also when we do the site assessment, we should probably um, let the technician from Brookfield Services know that that's part of what we should probably figure on is having that generator or their generator replacement and the tank moved, um, and I guess.
If I'm not clear about the generator, the generator is right next to that utility pole. It might not, but I know for sure the tank's gonna have, well, look at that tomorrow. I'm not.
Okay.
Not clear. Are you gonna be over there tomorrow?
Yes, that's the plan, yeah.
Alright, so I'll see you tomorrow.
Yes, we can figure that out tomorrow, pretty much, I think.
Okay.
Good.
Yes, Diana?
Just for the minutes, what, what project is that that might cause the generator to?
The, uh, the stormwater, um, um, management, um, master plan, I guess I'll call it. Um, I don't know what its official title is, but it's. Uh, good point, yeah, okay, so, so we'll discuss that some more with the, uh, people from Brookfield Services tomorrow.
Um, Michael, I asked the person who's coming out, I guess it's Scott, you said?
Yes.
Does, does he have a knowledge of what the load is going to be on that generator if we include more than just, uh, the annex building? Cuz Paul, is that correct, that it right now includes only the annex building?
No, it doesn't.
It includes the school, the annex, and the fire station.
Oh, it does, includes all of them.
And, and they'll have to do a load calculation for a new generator. We'll have to do, that, that's a, that's part of an assessment.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that they.
I, I think if we're gonna do it over, we might as well make it large enough to take the load that's there.
Exactly, right, okay. And we're also planning on having the town hall hooked up to that also.
Which is not a lot of load there.
Right, right.
It's just a distance problem.
Yeah, and the wire's all there, so we, yeah, we, we should be able to figure that out pretty handily.
Okay, just making sure. Thank you, Jen.
Anything else about the, you know, site assessment or the, um, generator? And if there is, we'll talk about it tomorrow. So the Valley Lake Road Culvert Grant, um, we did get that grant awarded to us. So we'll be sending out, um, an RFP for, um, uh, for the design work for the box culvert, um, where that metal culvert is, um, right behind the new old store. And between, you know, um, where the Kingsbury branch runs through by the annex. The fire department annex building, um, and, uh, I think, Brandy, what I'd like to do is to, um, try to do kind of a simplified RFP like you have put together for the mowing contract and the fuel contract. And there's basically a scope of work that the contractor would need to do, um, and I'm sure that any of these civil engineering, contractors that we are gonna be contacting will have all of the required insurance and stuff, but, um, so I don't think we need to get into the heavy details of specs and, and the nuances of the, um, insurance, etc., um, for the, for the RFP. So, um, I guess we'll try to get that together, um, and, and before, you know, the next select board meeting and get that out, um, I'll work on that. Um, I know what the, uh, what V-Trans has mentioned that we'll need, and, and I think V-Trans has volunteered to do the hydraulic study for us, uh, as opposed to the, the, uh, so that'll be one less thing to be in the, um, that will be needed to be done by the, um, design contractor, so.
I'll just mention really quickly that I was at the V-Trans meeting where we had these conversations. And that seems very reasonable, Michael. That, that they will, they will pay for that aspect of the work.
Yes.
And.
Sha, Shauna mentioned that they.
I mentioned it.
Yeah.
So I think it can be done without us paying into that directly.
Yeah. I haven't heard back on the Cabot Road resurfacing grant, um. I think I, and I think it's kind of out of, you know, Shauna's hands at the moment. She passes on those applications to the, the higher-ups in the V-Trans, um, um, agency, and I think they make the decisions. I will probably send her an email this week just, um, asking if, um, if she's heard anything about that particular, um, grant application. So that's pretty much it. Um, how we do, we're doing pretty good on time. We're pretty much right where we would wanna be for the personnel policy. So my thought was to screen share. I did work on it for a few hours, um, since our last select board meeting, uh, trying to incorporate some of Jill Muir's comments.
Michael, did you wanna deal with the solid waste management district at this time?
Oh, yes.
In the ARPA?
Let's do that before I forget.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Okay, uh, which I already had. So, yeah, um, so let's do, um, the solid waste, uh, management district. First, so we do have a person, uh, interested in serving as the rep, um, to the solid waste district, um, board, and her name is Eileen Wildman, and, um, she has been in contact with, uh, the solid waste district to get a sense of what her commitment would entail, um, and she's still willing to do it. So, um, do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion for Eileen Wildman as the representative to the Central Vermont Solid Waste Management District.
Okay, um, do I hear a, a second? Quickly lost Chris at the moment, so I'll, I'll sec, oh, here he is. Okay, I, I think he seconded it. Yeah, so.
Trying to second it.
Okay, there, okay, I figured that's what you were doing. Um, any more discussion on that at all, anybody? So all those in favor of appointing, uh, Eileen Wildman to the, to be Woodbury's rep to the solid waste district management board, I'd say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous, so, um, Eileen is appointed. So.
Diana?
Who would you like? Hang on, I have a cat, I think, wanting to eat, so, um, go ahead, Chris, ask your question. I'll be right back.
Diana, you sent out a, a, a link to us, uh, out a proposal, a, a grant program that would be part of Central Vermont?
I don't remember that.
Okay, I'll look at it again.
For a while, Robin and I have been switching back and forth as far as whose name is on what email and what computer, so.
Okay, I'll take a look back through.
Thank you.
Figure out what that was.
Could have had my name on it, but it could have come from her. You remember that, Robin? I remember sending a email. No, the one I sent was.
I remember sending a email, no, the one I sent was about that.
Okay.
Okay, I'll take another look back.
So this, the American Rescue Plan Act is basically the new act that I don't think it's been enacted yet. But each town is, is in line for a fairly significant amount of money. Woodbury, there's, there's the possibility, potential of receiving two hundred and fifty-eight thousand, seven hundred and nineteen dollars as our portion. And my understanding is it would be kind of paid out in a three-year period, there would be an initial state initial payment to municipalities directly from funds that are given to the state. That would total eighty-seven thousand, four hundred and seventeen dollars, and then there would be money given to the counties. That, and they would break up that money to the different municipalities within the county. So, but the, what's in question at the moment is what towns municipalities can spend that money on, it has to be somewhat related to the pandemic. I mean, I could quickly read this, but so there's basically four things at the moment, and nobody, those guidelines haven't really been set yet, so nobody really knows. The Regional Planning Commission is helping towns with this to, in fact, I just got a, there was a more recent bulletin about this that came, you know, about, about five thirty. It was about eight pages long, obviously I didn't get a chance to read it, but I will, I will read that and I will also send it out to folks. So they can check it out and and as I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, Bonnie Wanniger, the executive director of the Regional Planning Commission would, is willing to meet with us in a select board meeting to, to help us better understand.
Yes, they still gotta issue guidance, because it's pretty rough at this point.
It's very rough at this.
You know, with one of the Cambridge Select Board members, they're, they're getting over a million dollars, but they're the same boat we are, they're like, what do we do with it?
What do we do with it, right, yeah. So, so I think we'll just, rather than even, you know, read this list, but just, I just wanted to give everybody a heads up that this is something that is definitely happening. And sounds like they're still trying to figure out what they're gonna let towns municipalities spend it on.
Who, who is our current fiber rep?
Becky Brown.
So if we dumped every penny of that into having fiber and high access.
That is definitely, that's a possibility.
One of the things on the list.
That's on the list right now.
We argue that it should be high on the list.
I agree.
Because that actually increases the capacity for our town to interact more broadly.
Exactly.
But I know we have other things too. I think we could argue that covering a roof on a library that has town access could be used for some of those funds, but.
And one of, one of the thoughts that I've had is, you know, it's obvious that post-pandemic that the little room in the town office that we've used for select board meetings is totally inadequate. It's too small. And we've been talking about work on the town hall. The town hall could become the new site for where town meetings are held, maybe not town meeting, but, you know, select board meeting, planning commission, etc. And some of this money could go towards fixing up the town hall. We've been talking about doing that. I don't know, the fire department might be eligible for some of this.
We are, because we, a lot of it's toward emergency stuff, again, I need to see the guidance.
Right.
Because a lot of this money was either toward losses we had or monies we'd spent doing pandemic work, which we've done quite a bit of it.
Yeah, right. And I don't know if the fire department has a separate non, you're, you're set up as a nonprofit.
We're already a 501(c)(4), yeah, nonprofit, nonprofit.
So I don't know if, if you, the fire department as its own separate entity would be eligible for certain amounts of.
We are.
Okay, good.
Received some funds through Hardwick Rescue through our emergency medical responses from back in May of last year. Again, this, this stuff is a little challenging to figure out until you get the actual guidance, it'll spell out what it is eligible for, then you gotta kind of look at what you have that kind of fits in the holes that they give you to go in.
Yeah, so having some guidance from like either VLCT or the Central Vermont Regional Planning Commission, I think will help us also and.
But I think they're gonna actually issue guidance, the fed, the government will.
They are going to, yeah.
You know, there'll be rules you gotta follow, anyone's dealt with federal anything, there's always a set of.
Always a string of rules.
Always rules, yeah, and I agree. I think that Paul's right, I think that the work that you all have done has been incredible. And this is the time, if that can be allocated appropriately.
Yeah.
To make sure that our emergency management.
Yeah, we've just gotta see what it is and then how it fits.
There's no actual constructs right now.
Correct.
There's broad, broad guidance, but no, the particulars aren't there yet.
And that's what I've heard from other select board, I heard about this through some other select board people that I know in other towns that they're staring at this pile of money that they're gonna be getting, and they're like, what do we do with it? I don't know what to think about this, and since I said the same thing, I'm like, ah, yeah, it's, it seems nice until you think about the rules and you're like, then, then what?
Right, yeah, and they're kind of wanting towns to come up with ideas, but, you know, until we know if those ideas are worth
Right.
Putting on a list, so hopefully this will happen.
We have a little bit more immediate work that needs to be done before we worry about contributing to guidance some other ways.
Yep, yeah, so, so I just wanted to, you know, basically let us all know that this is happening, sounds like we already do. And we'll see where it goes, see where it takes us. Okay, what, I think that's.
We did it all, Michael, now we're ready to look at the policy.
We can't put it off any longer, can we?
Or you don't have a lot of time, but.
Okay, so I could screen share this and I could briefly go through what I have done, okay, so hang on, let me let me do that. Okay, oh, good, we're right where, so obviously we're pretty much been working on the paid leave. So let's just start there. And let me get, I gotta get myself out of the way here, okay, so I could do this. Where, how can I make this move? Hang on a second. Okay. So what I've added is mostly in blue. And this is after going, Jill Muir and I met for about an, an hour and kind of went through her changes. And one of the things that she, she suggested was to simplify the language, you know, I had it broken down to hours per week for part-time for the town clerk, town treasurer, etc. And she just suggested that we simplify that and get rid of all of that and just have part-time employees would, would receive a prorated basis based on what we're offering to the full-time employee. And she also suggested that we totally separate the employees from the elected officials. So I started another worksheet for the elected officials only, so in the actual personnel policy, we'll, we'll just be dealing with the town employees, which is basically the road crew. And then as an addendum to the personnel policy, we'll have the benefits for the elected officials. So let me make this move, hang on, okay, so click on.
Where do the other employees fit in, like the assistant clerk and the?
Okay, let me get to the language here. Okay, so, yeah, hang on. Oh, damn. Hang on, I just clicked the wrong thing.
You broke it.
I broke it, so let me get back to the screen share. Uh, let's see, okay. Uh-oh. Okay, I lost the hang on. I think I eliminated the personnel policy. All right, now I gotta get rid of this. Okay, so can everybody see it?
See you.
You can see me, okay, so we are screen sharing it, okay, so let me, hang on. All right, get rid of that, back to screen share. Open up that. Okay, can everybody see it now?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so let's get back to where we were. Slow and steady here, no more. All right, so Diana, this is, in a, this section in blue, in accordance with Vermont law, part-time or temporary employee who is eighteen or older and works more than twenty hours, twenty weeks per year and averages eighteen or more hours per week during the year is entitled to paid leave benefits. And then benefits for part-time employees are prorated, all other part-time employees working should say less than twenty weeks per year or less than eighteen hours per week are not eligible for any benefits. Okay, so that covers that, and then what we, what we do with the benefits that we have offered in the past to the assistant town clerk or the assistant treasurer, we'll have to discuss that. And see if the select board is willing to extend those. Okay, so so that pretty much sets the, this part in blue, pretty much, and that's state statute, so that pretty much sets who will be receiving benefits. And this and then I just eliminated all of this, you know, eighteen, you know, the stuff where it was broken down into eighteen hours a week or forty and just have it stated that it's prorated. And then I did put in blue here just so that people know that the text referring to the town clerk and the town treasurer and assistants will be covered separately. This way, when we have new employees or, or just even to give to our own employees, it's a little less confusing. So everything else is the same there. So, yeah, so and taking out all of that, the, the, the sentence that covers that is benefits for part-time employees are prorated and based on benefits for a full-time employee. All right, so and then that's the same as before. And then these are Jill's comments in the on the side. So another thing that Jill mentioned to me is that we are very, very generous in the amount of hours that we offer for sick time. She said generally what's offered to a town employee is basically it's more like twelve days, so basically a day per month of sick time is what's offered, so, and this is up to us, we can keep it at the fifteen days if we want. Or we can cut it back to what's the, the more what other towns, most other towns tend to do for sick time is offering a day per month. So basically twelve days per year of accrued, which breaks down to ninety-six hours.
So we allow
We allow fifteen days at the moment.
Right, what do they earn annually?
Earn?
Correct.
For wages?
Well, no, for the, for the amount of days, is it, do we give a day a month and we let them build up to fifteen and that's where it stops, or do we?
No, they earn, right now in the personnel policy, they earn fifteen days per year.
That's as, as of July one.
Yeah, and they can, yeah, that's when the accrual will begin, and they can accrue see, the maximum for part, let's see, the maximum amount of sick leave that may be accumulated is two hundred and forty hours. So that's, that's the amount, total amount that they can accrue over time.
Have we had an issue with abuse of the sick time at all, Chuck?
Uh, no.
I, I'm inclined not to do anything with it, but.
To leave it as is, okay.
I agree with Paul, I would like to leave it at the fifteen.
Okay, all right.
Forgetting, but.
Can I talk?
Yes, you can.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We had one instance last week that they, a part-timer took, used nine hours of sick time on a typical. Yeah. Just putting it out there.
Okay, so I think that that would be, I mean, I don't see anything wrong with that, they basically would have.
The individual scheduled to work nine hours?
Yes.
Okay, I guess I don't have, I mean, it is what it is, and then they had the time.
Yeah.
Okay.
Part-time help, are they allowed two hundred and forty hours till?
No, it would be prorated, so based on the number of hours they work, let's say ballpark figure of twenty hours per week. So they, they basically kind of, the maximum that they can accrue is a hundred and twenty hours.
Yeah.
Yeah, and during the course of the year, they would be eligible for, I guess technically again, based on twenty hours, seven and a half days of sick time.
Yep.
For the year.
That's, that's the same math that I just did, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so, so I made a note of that, we'll keep it at fifteen or a hundred and twenty hours. Okay, so that's the crate, that hasn't changed at all, pretty much written in stone. So the other thing that I, again, to simplify this crossed out all the kind of configuring for part-time and the town treasurer and town clerk. And just basically wrote vacation time for part-time employees shall be prorated. So based on the full-time schedule. And think, and then I, I know, let's see, I think we've already discussed the part where of, you know, requesting this time, maybe it's up ahead of us here.
I think we went, may have gone past, or talked about a form to fill out.
Right, yeah, that's probably coming up, so personal time, again, same thing. Okay, here we go, okay, so overtime. That's all, all the same. That's all the same. All days are the same. Okay, so Jill recommended that I cross out insurance and just have benefits. Okay, so Jill recommended that I cross out insurance and just have benefits, which I haven't done yet. And again, the town clerk and town treasurer are kind of taken out of the, the language. That's why that's crossed out. She recommended that this should be just beaded, which I will do. I think all of this, again, you could just see where I've crossed out town clerk, town treasurer. For any of that. And then there's, is one part that I did add straight from the VL, VLCT model, personnel policy. Uh, let's see, it's at the end of the so employee discipline, this is something that we put in the personnel policy the last time. And then there's another section, so that guidelines on how to provide discipline and warnings for performance. Which pretty much is similar if there were different drug issues or, or substance abuse issues, I guess I'll say. So then Jill strongly suggested that we add this, and this is directly out of the VLCT model. A personnel policy for an employment, play termination process. So I've just added that. And I haven't, you know, made it, put in the town or incorporated some of the guidance, but I think she strongly recommended that this would be in here mostly to cover the town from any type of post-termination legal challenges from an employee. So I think, I, I do think that this should be a part of the personnel policy. And now, you know, I can send this to everybody and, and if I haven't already, and we can, you could take a look at it. The other, I'm going to get out of the screen share. Unless anybody has any questions or wants to look at any part of it that.
No, just if we have that, we should review it, maybe get ready to vote on this at the next meeting or the meeting after, you know what I mean?
Right, yeah. Yeah, so.
I'm trying to see if I have a copy of it.
Michael, can you send me the cop, can you send us all the copy that is the most updated one?
Yeah, the one that we're looking at is the most updated and I, I think I might have sent it to you yesterday. And I also sent the model VLCT policy.
Yeah, that I have.
So maybe I didn't send this one. I, I thought.
We don't think we have that one, Michael.
All right, so I'll send that. You know, one question, one question I had for the select board and, and anyone else really here. You know, I've been looking at the model VLCT policy and it's really nicely organized. I'm very tempted to just kind of transform our personnel policy into that. There's a good, I know when Skip worked on the revision a few years ago, a lot of what's in the model policy is in our policy. He, he did tend to edit in a little bit.
If, if you like that and that's what you want to do, I don't object to that.
Okay.
I just know we want to get this in place sooner than later.
Right, yeah. I mean, my thought was to take that model policy and then, you know, the different specifics that we have as far as the paid leave time, you know, take that from our own personnel policy and put it in there. I'll take a look and see what, how much work that actually might be.
Over commit yourself.
I don't want to reinvent the wheel here and I want to make sure that.
I know a lot of model policy has been well-vetted in the legal system, which is why sticking with the more vetted language is a good idea.
Right, right.
Entering a pothole somewhere.
Yeah, it was put together by the VLCT lawyers, and they have vetted it, the, the two thousand and eighteen version. So that, anything that was formally there that we haven't changed is good as far as the lawyers are concerned. And I know Jill is a kind of, you know, pretty much aware of what is legal and what isn't. So in her suggestions, she, you know, she's aware of that. So if there was anything really glaring that we had done, she would have already warned us about it, but. All right, so I'll, it, it's a busy time of year for me, but I will.
Michael, it would really help if you just sent us that draft.
Okay, I thought I had, so I will. I'll send it to you. And.
And we can support you.
Okay.
By doing some work.
Yeah, Brandy has fixed the, that pay scale chart for us.
I saw that, yeah.
Yeah, so. I have to figure out how to delete the old one. I haven't quite figured that out yet. Okay, so. I, I looked at it, it's fine. I just, now, now I have to figure out how to put it into our personnel policy, how to get rid of the old one and put a new one in.
The names, once you're ready for that, are we going to add any other titles?
Good question. I guess we'll have to look at what's there. I can't think of anything new that we would have at this point.
Is the, the mission to have a full-time third person as of July first, or is that too soon to?
I, I, I think that could be a, a mission. It could happen. I think if it doesn't happen by July first, it's not a big deal. I think.
We just got to get our, our bid out to get people applying for it. Interviews and.
Yeah, having it done by July first, it is possible, but it, but it may not happen.
So the reason I say that is, is that the benefits kick in July one.
Right, so we know.
But wouldn't those be retroactive, Brandy?
They could, they yes, they would be retroactive and any, any new hire that we have, there's a six-month probationary period too, so.
Right.
I'm just referring to the, the positions now for the, the two part-timers that if, if it starts July one as our, our benefits kick in boom on July one, that those are then offered to them.
Right.
Yeah. Immediately after they're hired, they do, they don't have to go through, they don't have to earn them the first year like.
Automatically accrued, they automatically, it's kind of like.
She's talking about the existing part-timers. They're going to earn their benefits starting July first if we haven't replaced them.
I see, right. Okay, because I was gonna say, a new, a new hire shouldn't be getting benefit the first day of start.
No, no, it's not about new hires.
Okay.
About the two existing.
About the existing.
I think our goal will be trying to get someone in, but we might not get that done, but we should start working toward that. I think we'll get our job description and we'll advertise for a position and see what we get.
Yeah, that should be, that should be a high priority for us.
Yeah, very high priority.
Yeah, even, you know, and we can start the, the bidding process, the RFP or put.
Yeah, we are just putting out a, putting out a employment opportunity.
Yeah, the personnel policy doesn't have to be finished.
Nope.
You know, it would be, it would be good to have it finished by the time we're actually interviewing someone, so.
Well, because I'd like, my concern was also making sure that the problems Chuck had last June aren't going to crop back up with some of the sol, solutions are in that policy.
Yeah, yeah, they're in it as it is, so you know, we could just.
Part of why we need to get it in place to
Right.
To resolve that, so we don't have a repeat of last spring.
Right, so if it, if it looks like, you know, trying to convert to the VLCT model, if that looks like it's just going to really slow things down, we'll just get this one done as it is.
Been working on this for a year and a half. It's time to.
Yeah, we'll just get it done. And get it to the VLCT for the lawyers to do the final vetting and have it in place. In fact, that's probably the best.
Yeah, so I think like Chris said, if you get us the copy you have, well, we'll, we'll be well-versed in it by the next meeting and we'll be ready to vote on it, I think. Wouldn't you say, Chris?
I think so. If, if I can, if I can make my way through it with the, with the draft changes that are in there right now, I just haven't seen.
Yeah.
I'll do, I'll do my due diligence and.
I'll do the same. I'll get it read through and if I had any comments, I think we can work out the couple of little areas that might exist and just be done with it.
Okay, and if, if you had the time to quickly look at the VLCT model policy, because there are some things in there that probably could or should be in there. And if I had a little, and you could even send me, you know, if you look at it and you say, well, I think the this certain part, section of the model policy should be in there. What, like, what's the term for when you're kind of have your whole family working for you?
Nepotism.
Nepotism, there's a nepotism section in there. Maybe that should be in there. We don't have it now. So if, if you see things in the model policy that that you feel pretty strongly should be there, let me know. And it's just a cut and paste thing to
Yeah.
Get it in.
We can work through that, maybe have it ready for you come up with the final vote on this, maybe next meeting.
Yeah, that's, that'll be the, that'll be the plan.
For next meeting.
Yeah, because that should, again, another high priority along with getting the, you know, I think also a topic for the next meeting is to talk about getting the hiring or the, whatever you call it, the advertisement out for people can apply for the job.
Yeah, we should get that process started.
Because that shouldn't be too difficult. We already have that job description.
We do, yeah.
Yeah, we can move that forward, I think fairly efficiently.
Yeah, let's get it done.
All right. So looks like we're pretty much ready to go into executive session. Do I hear, is there any other business at all, any, anything else that anybody would like to bring up before we move into executive session? Yes, Diana?
I just wanted to mention, it looks like there are three weeks before the next meeting. Oh, maybe not.
No.
No, we're good. This is the twenty-fourth is the next one.
And then there will be three weeks.
And it will be a three-week wait, which is a good, good time to get that bid out. We'll have applications to review at the next meeting after that.
Yeah. Okay, any other business at all? Any other?
I'm good.
Where are you gonna, how many different locations do you want that advertised on?
Well, as many as possible is my opinion, but I don't know.
Right.
I would say go as broad as we can. I kind of, I, I agree with Paul on that one. I think that we should.
Yeah, and VLCT, I think they also have a listing for.
They have a listing on VLTC, CT two.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, anything else at all before we go into executive session? Okay, so do I hear a motion that we, the select board enter into executive session citing one VSA, section three thirteen A three, the employment of a municipal employee?
So moves.
Yes.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of going into executive session, say aye.
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 Who are we inviting? Chuck?
Inviting Chuck, yes, thank you.